Good evening, welcome to the September 3rd, 2013 Lawrence City Commission Meeting. First item on the agenda is to proclaim September 5th through September 11th, 2013, as National Literacy Week. Do we have somebody here from... please?
I'm sorry, my name is Karen Wyckoff from the Altusah Club.
Great. Can you tell us a little bit about our proclamation this evening?
International literacy is a very important goal of our club in literacy in our community. We support many projects within the community to support literacy, one of them being the Born to Read Project where we donate books to newborns. We have a book club at New York Elementary School and we give to adult literacy projects also.
Great. I'll go ahead and read your proclamation.
Thank you.
Whereas there are over 796 million adults worldwide who lack the literacy skills needed to obtain good jobs or to actively participate in the education of their children, it is estimated that 75 million children did not attend school and many more attended regularly or are dropouts, and over 150,000 people in the state of Kansas over the age of 16 lack the ability to read. Whereas Altusah International, Inc., an organization of executive and professional women committed to literacy service, has pledged to work toward worldwide literacy. And whereas the community of Lawrence has residents of all ages in every neighborhood who are functionally illiterate. And whereas Altusah International, Inc. of Lawrence has provided annual scholarships for women, is the underwriting sponsor of the River City Reading Festival, has supported New York Elementary School with a large donation of books, has provided books to Willow Domestic Violence Center and First Step House, has provided large print books to Lawrence Senior Services, and has implemented the Newborn Book Project at Lawrence Memorial Hospital, and thereby encourages reading and the promotion of lifelong literacy for the residents of Lawrence. Now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 5th through the 11th, 2013, as International Literacy Week and urge all citizens of this community to continue working together in addressing literacy needs in Lawrence and Douglas County. Come get this, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a recognition of the Lawrence Police Foundation's CAR-54 Where Are You Golf Tournament. Anybody here from the Police Foundation want to speak to this this evening?
Good evening, I'm Nadine Hyde, I'm the President of Lawrence Police Foundation. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for recognizing our organization. We are holding a tournament next Monday, September 9th, the Cobblestone Orchards Golf Course. We are doing this again this year to raise funds to purchase automated external defibrillators. Our goal of the organization that was formed in 2011 is to allow us to purchase enough defibrillators to put in each squad car. Last year we purchased about eight, hopefully this year more. Our goal is to equip each squad car. We have several like-minded individuals that are on our board that support this project and we feel that this is a benefit to the entire city of Lawrence and we appreciate your acknowledgement.
Great, we appreciate you working so hard to make sure we're safe and that the officers can do their job well, I appreciate that. Let me go ahead and read the proclamation. It states, "Lawrence Police Foundation exists to support, assist, and encourage the Lawrence, Kansas Police Department with funding and collaboration in projects, research studies, and equipment and educational needs. And whereas the Lawrence Police Foundation held its first golf tournament in 2012 and will again hold the CAR-54 Where Are You Golf Tournament in September 2013. And whereas the golf tournament proceeds from 2013 will be used to place automatic external defibrillators in Lawrence, Kansas Police Department patrol vehicles, with the goal of having automatic external defibrillators in all patrol vehicles. And whereas last year a golf tournament was a huge success thanks to Lawrence community's support. Now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, encourages the community to support the Lawrence Police Foundation in its effort to support our local law enforcement by participating in the Second Annual CAR-54 Where Are You Golf Tournament in September 2013." Thank you very much. Appreciate it, thanks. Very good, thank you guys. And the next item is a proclamation that proclaims the month of September 2013 as National Preparedness Month, please.
Thank you, I think.
Terry Smith, Douglas County Emergency Management Manager, has laryngitis this evening.
I'm gonna try my best.
So she's...
You don't need to say anything if you don't want to. You're here to receive it, I don't want to strain you.
I can tell you what a very good job that she does in how this is... It's always important to be thinking about these things when we're not thinking about them. So we'll take a pause, appreciate her work, think about the work obviously of the Police Department, Fire Department, and others due in cooperation with Terry's department.
Very good. Thanks for stepping in Dave, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas National Preparedness Month is a nationwide effort held each September, and whereas the goal of the 10th Annual National Preparedness Month is to increase public awareness about the importance of preparing for emergencies and to encourage individuals to take action. And whereas no community is truly prepared for disaster until every individual, family, and business takes personal responsibility for preparedness. And whereas the US Department of Homeland Security through its Ready Campaign and the Citizens Corps Program work with a wide variety of organizations, including local, state, federal government agencies, and the private sector, to highlight the importance of emergency preparedness and to promote individual involvement through events and activities across the nation. And whereas all Americans need to take some simple steps to prepare for emergencies, including making a family emergency plan, getting emergency supply kit, being informed about local threats, and getting involved in preparing their communities. And whereas the flooding, straight-line winds, tornadoes, and drought conditions that affected both Kansas and Douglas County in 2013 illustrate the potential devastation to communities and highlights the importance of pre-planning disaster response and sheltering operations. Now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2013 to be National Preparedness Month in Lawrence and encourage citizens of Lawrence to join with citizens across the nation to ensure a community of citizens who are disaster-aware and disaster-prepared. Thank you very much. And next is a presentation for the Read Across Lawrence.
Hi, my name is Brad Allen, I'm the Executive Director of the Lawrence Public Library. Thanks for squeezing me out at the last minute here today. Very briefly, I just wanted to let the City Commission know that, and everyone here in our community, that we have kicked off the Read Across Lawrence month, this month, we're reading The Worst Hard Time by Timothy Egan. We're doing this in collaboration with KU Libraries and KU Common Book this year. KU Common Book is a program that getting first-year students all on the same page, we decided to try a different partnership working with them. We've had KU Libraries a partner for a good while. So I just wanted to let you all know that this is going on this month at our website, at KU's website, you can find all the different things going on. One quick thing to note, the author, Tim Egan, will be here on September 26th at the LEED Center, that's a free program open to the public, we're very excited about. And mainly, I just wanted to come here tonight and give you guys a copy of the book, so thanks for having me. That's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it. I think I've gotten through some of those books I've received with years, hopefully this is a good one too.
It's great, I started it on Sunday and it's a fabulous read, I wouldn't say it's particularly uplifting, but certainly a good read and something that affects, has affected us on the local level and just wanted to share a copy with you all today.
Great, thank you, please come up and... Yes, it was. Thanks Brad.
Yeah, I've already read it, so it's up to you actually, I mean, we are out of copies, so...
But if you'd like to pass it along to somebody else?
Yeah, it's written, so dedicated, Kansas, really are.
That's right. Well, hey, thank you so much you guys.
Thanks Brad. So you can vouch for the good book?
That's very good. Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered under one motion and will be acted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items that a member of the Commission would like removed from the Consent Agenda?
5B.
5B. Okay?
6B for vote only.
6B, so we're removing 5B and 6B, anything else? Yes Dave?
Commissioner 7A, we had a request from a citizen that did not get information that this was going to be on your agenda until late. This is the Traffic Safety Commission's recommendation to approve traffic calming devices on Alabama Street at 7th Street.
So we have item 5B, 6B, and 7A only that will be removing from the Consent Agenda. Is there an item that a member of the pub could like removed from the Consent Agenda? Okay, seeing none, I would like a motion to add claims to vendors, 290 vendors of $725,373.91 and $400 of that is to Rock Chalk Park-related items. With the exclusion of items 5B, 6B, and 7A, is there a motion?
Moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Farmer, all in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And item 5B.
Well, I got some calls today after the article in the paper came out about folks who were...I think one person's words were, "Last week it's couches and this week it's dogs." And so I think one of the things that we need to do to maybe be proactive is, I would be for putting some posts with some dirty business bags for animals and some maybe trash receptacles to encourage folks if, you know, their dogs do...
Do business?
That they could, you know, pick it up and it's that way in most parks that I've seen in places that I've lived around the country. So I just wanted to throw that out and, you know, for conversation.
Okay, yes.
I think one part of that too Dave, under the, oh, the parks that we have now, the dog has to be on a leash, right?
Right, all dogs have to be on a leash unless they're within a fenced confined area or they're part of an electronic fence system on a private property. All dogs within the city park have to be on a leash.
I mean, I understand why, you know, we're being asked to consider that, this particular ordinance that would allow people to take, you know, their animal in the cemetery as long as it was on a leash, but you know, the one part here that if somebody has their dog on a leash, it says that they must enter and the dog must remain on the cemetery road. I think that we have people that go out and visit to pay respects and stuff who have their dog leashed and, you know, are very respectful of the grounds, you know, I would think that it would be something that we ought to consider as long as that dog is on a leash and somebody is with the dog and caring for the dog or animal, that they can take it anywhere in the cemetery. I mean, I really do, I mean, it changes one sentence literally and the entire ordinance changed and that's just remove dogs that enter the cemetery must stay on the cemetery road, everything else I think would be fine.
But isn't that just reiterating our...
It's the current...
Just go ahead, yeah.
So that would be not to enact this.
I would agree, I think this particular one, there's no really safety issues, it's covered adequately by the present stipulations and it could cause some problems for people who want to visit with their dogs and dogs are very important to a lot of people. Sometimes people like to take their dogs out and visit someone who was important to them, so I don't see any reason for this, there's no safety issues, there's nothing here that we need to do, I just don't think there's anything to this that we need to make codify it.
Okay.
The only thing, what I would hope is in place and if it's not in place we should put in place, I understand that cemeteries are quite a bit different than the general park in that we have, we owe the respect to the people who are permanently interned there, so if we could have signage that says all dogs must be leashed even though it is a city law, I know, but just to remind people that that's a strict requirement and that is something in the fact that all waste must be removed, however you want to say it, but that's the two things I think that's important. And maybe that will help identify the cemetery as a place that deserves a higher level of respect than just a regular park.
Okay, so...
Excuse me, Mayor. Commissioner, I agree with that 100%, I've got quite a few family members who are buried in public cemeteries, city-owned cemeteries on 15th Street and, you know, I appreciate all the work and stuff, patrol and all that goes on in cemeteries, but it's one of those times that I really believe this particular case that as long as the animal is on a leash and somebody is tending to the business of that animal, then it should be allowed to take it in and not just remain on the street.
Okay, so making sure that, again, if that's the direction we're going to go, that if we can be proactive to kind of help foster that, you know, having trash receptacles or obviously not the metal tacky ones that are, you know, at a softball field, but something that looks nice with some, maybe attached to those signs Bob, that say all dogs must be on a leash and, you know, just...
Sure.
Having the community help us keep those clean and I think it's a matter of common sense.
Agreed.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote on this, and either way I think we should do it since it's on the agenda. And then we'll vote and then see how it goes and then provide instructions when we're finished, how about that? Okay, so item 5B, is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd make a motion to deny ordinance number 8899.
Motion to deny by Vice Mayor Amick, second by Commissioner Riordan, all in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion is denied 5-0. And in light of that, please instruct our fine city staff to install the appropriate signage and accoutrement that would allow careful dog owners to pick up after their animals. How about that? Perfect. Fair enough. Okay, and then item 6B is related to upholstered furniture on porches, that item is polled?
Mayor, I'd just simply ask to have that polled to, in light of the vote last week.
Okay, so is there a motion for ordinance number 8900?
Yeah.
Mayor, public comment?
Oh, is there any public comment on this? Please.
Let's see, I'm Patricia Sinclair, 331 Johnson Avenue. And I'm sorry that a combination of illness and an internet breakdown that kept me on the phone all afternoon prevented me from submitting written remarks in advance after putting in much research on this ordinance. I hope that others will contact their commissioners about their feelings on the priorities and conduct of the environmental code department, perhaps using social media as well. Tonight I ask you not to approve ordinance 8900 on its second reading. It was presented as the upholstered furniture ordinance, but that was just a smokescreen. Perhaps fire concerns could be addressed by enforcing our fireworks ban. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 8900 actually does something very drastic by introducing a new definition, that of enclosed porch, and changing our existing definition of a traditional porch with a roof to the same thing as an exterior portion of the exterior or yard of your property. This means that indoor furniture or anything else that you feel is appropriate to be on your porch or your yard is forbidden. Outdoor furniture was only required in the yard... This, I apologize, I didn't even eat supper, so this is the best I could do. Outdoor furniture was only required in the yard since a memo in 2004 when bikes and lawn mowers were also allowed to be placed in the exterior. If that's not clear, I mean, there was even a memo written that I have here that clarified that the outdoor furniture that was the requirement, you know, was, didn't apply to furniture on your porch. And at that time, a porch was a porch, you know, with a roof that accessed an entrance to your home. All right, but the Pandora's Box that I opened as I traced the ordinance's back showed ordinance 8873 from this past June that made sweeping changes by repealing all, all of the existing environmental code, Chapter 9, Article 6, as well as Chapter 5, Article 10, parts of the property management code. This latter code is only changed in part, the full code only by reference. Visit City Hall if you want to read the whole thing. By that I mean, the ordinary citizen hasn't got a prayer knowing, you know, what this is. Please consider rescinding this ordinance that was passed in June, I believe. So we are left without any guidance as to the authority, purpose, enforcement, standards, previously that a condition should be readily visible from any public place or any surrounding private property. I find it very strange that such massive changes were made just before the arrival of our new Assistant Director at Planning, Kurt Schroeder, who oversees the city's environmental code as well as some other areas. Surely he would want to say in what changes were needed and some time to get a feel for things. Brian Jimenez, Code Enforcement Officer, has for years wanted the entire city to be judged the same, but it is not built the same and some of us still believe in privacy without privacy fences and in freedom. Much of Lawrence is covered by covenants that govern residents of those neighborhoods, but many of us do not have a two-car garage. Previous commissions have expressed concerns with having the department focus on avoiding demolition by neglect. Now it is complaint-driven and those complaints are only investigated or cited selectively. I would like to get rid of commercial uses in residential neighborhoods, for example. We've had some very serious problems that deserve more focus, such as the apartment building that needed to be condemned one year after Brian saw it, and the Haskell Recycling Center, the Packard property, and that property that discharged hazardous waste repeatedly. I think that was on Pennsylvania, but I'm not sure in that industrial park. So thank you for your consideration of this, I just feel that it's time to stand back a minute, let our new Assistant Director assess things and not, you know, continually make changes to a code that, you know, citizens aren't even aware of and particularly this one is kind of scary just reading about, you know, how is one to determine if your windows lock correctly or, you know, it just struck me as odd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you about the cemetery, I, as one who has loved ones buried in Ottawa, have seen people walking their dogs or letting their dogs run and poop on my parents' grave and I have been outraged.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, back to the Commission, is there a motion?
Let me make a statement here first. We are not restricting the use of porches or decks or any of the other ancillary architectural appendages that we talked about in the ordinance. What we are doing is restricting a certain kind of furniture for the safety of the inhabitants and the neighbors and the firemen, firewomen, firefighters that are called to task when there is a fire. So I don't see that we're reducing the liberties and the individual rights of people in any way that's significant and there's a lot of people that are getting very upset about this. You can use your porch, you can use furniture as long as it's an outdoor certified furniture that's not going to explode and cause a structural fire and hurt or maim the people inside and hurt or maim our firefighters. It's very simple, it's a safety issue. So with that in mind, I do move that we approve ordinance number 8900.
Okay, second. Motion to approve second reading, second and final reading of ordinance number 8900 by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Riordan, all in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-2 with Vice Mayor Amick and Commissioner Farmer dissenting. And item 7A, we'll just go ahead and table that, can I have a motion to table that?
I think continuing for one week is what I indicated.
Is there a motion to continue item 7A?
Somewhere.
Second. Motion to continue item 7A for one week by Vice Mayor Amick, second by Commissioner Riordan, all in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. City Managers Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Commission. We've put together our first monthly report regards to the progress and cost for the infrastructure at Rock Chalk Park. This is the July report, will be following a similar template in the future, be happy to respond to questions that you might have. Mark Teal is here, Chuck is out this evening, Chuck, Mark, David Cronin, others in other city departments worked to put this report together. Second item is our July sales tax distribution. Not necessarily promising, it's not the worst hard time, it's kind of a continuation of some challenging times, but we're continuing to monitor that, monitor expenditures obviously as well. And finally, some information from our Park and Rec Department on regards to some of their recent activities. Thanks, happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Any questions for the City Manager? Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda are the regular agenda items and I'd like to ask you to make sure you silence your cellphone and in recognition of comments for each agenda item, there'll be a four-minute time limit and at 3 minutes and 30 seconds you'll hear this note and that's your sign to please to wrap it up. First item on the agenda is to consider a request to establish a crosswalk with pedestrian hybrid beacon on 11th Street to Delaware Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. On August 5th, the Traffic Safety Commission did hear a request for a crosswalk and pedestrian hybrid beacon at 11th and Delaware. Traffic data collected in July found the 85th percentile speed on 11th Street to be just under 35 miles an hour. Based on that speed of traffic and the width of the street, pedestrians would have to have clear sight distance and gaps in traffic for a little over 600 feet in each direction to safely cross the street. At the Traffic Safety Commission meeting, there were no citizens that spoke either for or against the request. There was very little discussion by the Traffic Safety Commission, but there was a motion to deny the request that was approved 7 to 2. The two dissenting votes, those commissioners had concerns about this location being right adjacent to a city park and then they had concerns about how far it was to a safe crossing in each direction up and down 11th Street. And with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions?
Did we ever receive any comment from the Neighborhood Association?
No, we did not.
Nothing at all, okay.
What's the volume of traffic like in that area? I thought I saw it in here somewhere, but...
Yeah, there's a... Yeah, there's a, just under eight thousand vehicles a day.
Twenty-four hour day?
Yes.
Most of them a day?
Right.
And how does that compare with streets like that? Is that high, low, medium?
That's fairly typical for a collector's street, and Eleventh Street is classified as a collector's street through there, so that, that's about normal for a street like that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Is there public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is K Two Welsh, I'm on the board of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association. And the reason you haven't heard from us is that our meeting was postponed because of Labor Day, and we'll discuss it next Monday. Just FYI.
Okay.
And I haven't seen any chatter about it so far, so, new subject.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. KT?
KT, question. The beacon that we have at Eleventh and between New York and New Jersey, what's the usage like there? Do you have any idea?
I don't have statistics, but I see it used all the time, especially during the school year. And at night, it's so hazardous on Eleventh that I see it used by adults at night a lot. I do know it took us five years and a lot of really committed young parents to get that one, so I think if we're trying to get another one, we have to sort of gird our loins, and we'll talk about it next Monday.
And I think, you know, Mayor, one of the things I know you'll recall, I think we were here the night that we discussed the placing of that particular beacon, and that we had received quite a bit of comment from a number of people for that beacon, and to be honest, I haven't heard from really anybody this time.
Yeah. Well, I think it's probably because the school year started. There's a lot more young kids in East Lawrence now, so, you know, that's my guess.
One of the things I, I don't know if you want to weigh on.
Yeah.
I was thinking that...
We had to defer until after the meeting.
Yeah, let the association talk, at least we can get some kind of word back.
We'll do it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on that?
Uh, yes, there's no other public comment?
Make a motion to defer this item until after the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association meets and makes recommendation.
Sorry. Motion to defer three, two weeks, three weeks?
Two weeks is fine.
Two weeks? By Vice Mayor Amick, second by Commissioner Shum, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes five zero to defer. Next item on the agenda is to consider adopting a first reading ordinance, number eighty-eight to ninety-eight, establishing discretion for the municipal court judge to order recoupment fees for convicted defendants who have been appointed counsel and/or served jail time for which the city incurred costs.
Mayor and Commissioners, your city attorney's office has been working on a couple of ordinances that you have on this agenda item and the next one, and Maria Kaminsky, our assistant city attorney, has responsibilities in the police department to support matters. Walk us through those ordinances.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Maria Kaminsky, Assistant City Attorney. The proposed language in ordinance eighty-eight ninety-eight provides discretion for municipal court judge to order recoupment fees for defendants, and it's really twofold. The first part is allowing discretion for the municipal court judge to order fees when the defendant is convicted or enters a diversion agreement when they were appointed counsel, so when the defendant was indigent initially. Upon conviction or diversion, the municipal court judge could then order fines to recoup some of the costs that the city incurs in appointing counsel. And the second part of that is ordering jail fees if the defendant is ordered to jail or spends any time there, if the defendant is financially available upon sentencing. The first one, I'll return to it, the public defender fee when the defendant is appointed counsel, I'll just say as background, there is a constitutional obligation for courts to appoint counsel for indigent defendants, and some of the things that the judge considers are whether the defendant has a job, for example, how much they make, whether they have children to support, the bills that they make on a monthly basis. And in many instances, the defendant is indigent at the beginning and cannot hire private counsel, and so there is an obligation to hire a public defender. In many cases, there's actually, well, there is a questionnaire that the defendants fill out to claim indigency, and they can actually write whether they can afford anything. And in many cases, the defendant will write yes, fifty dollars or a hundred, I mean, not very much, but in many cases, they do say they can afford something, but that cost is never actually ordered or recovered. But there is actually statutory authority for the municipal court judge to be ordering that, and that is outlined in the memo, but basically, it just says that if, if the defendant is convicted, the judge can order recoupment fees for counsel if the judge finds that the person is financially able, and if upon sentencing, it is determined that the person who was ordered to pay cannot pay, they're not willfully in default, they can petition the court to waive all or part of that fee. So it's all about discretion here, and there is statutory authority for it. The second part of that is the jail fees. In two thousand and seven, we had the language inserted in the current ordinance, which provides that the municipal court judge has, shall order jail fees upon conviction, and currently the amount is seventy-four, seventy-two forty-one, and that's established by the county, and the city has to pay that amount for each day that there is someone in jail for municipal court. And so the purpose of this second fold is just to recoup some of that cost as well, provided that the person is financially able to, and the judge would make the same kind of findings of indigency in that case. And I'll be happy to answer questions if there are any.
Any questions for Maria?
So, so if, if the judge has discretion and says this person can pay and they can't, what's the, because that's discretionary based upon somebody who really may not understand somebody's predicament. What's the, what happens then?
Well, it is a case-by-case basis, and the judge would be obligated to assess reasonable attorney fees, but in your case, there is always an appellate process. I'm not sure that it would happen that the judge really orders someone to pay if it really is unreasonable or not feasible, but there is always an appeal that could be possible, and then that would be subject to review.
And then can they, can they work off community service to work off those fees?
In some cases, the municipal court judge does order community service in lieu of those fees, and that would definitely be possible in this case if the judge has discretion to do so.
Yes.
So does someone have to hire counsel to go through the appeal process, even though they may not be able to afford that, that either?
Whether, I don't believe that counsel is appointed on appeal. I might defer that to the municipal court manager for costs or Tony.
Yeah, it is.
They are? Okay. I'm sorry.
So the answer is yes?
Okay.
And so I, I might add that last year, it was estimated that the city spent approximately a hundred, two thousand dollars on public defender fees, none of which was recovered by the city.
And we're on track to spending almost the exact same amount this year?
Yes, exactly. So for the first quarter, it was around fifty-one thousand, so it's on track to be about the same amount.
Help me to understand, if somebody comes in and says, "I can pay fifty dollars or a hundred dollars," will that continue? And if it is, is that part of the process where the judge looks at their ability to pay?
Well, we wouldn't say just because you can pay fifty dollars, that's what it's going to be. That question might come out if the judge just has discretion to assess reasonable attorney fees, because fifty might not be the reasonable amount, or if they can pay a hundred, it might be less than that. That might, the reasonable amount might be less or more than that, so it wouldn't depend entirely on what they've said. That just, that's just an indicator for us that in some circumstances, they can pay something, but not the cost of the entire attorney fee and that it's never recovered.
So if somebody came in, they, knowing that that would affect that they could put down zero dollars, and then it's still the judge would have the discretion to decide independent of that?
Yes, exactly. Well, circumstances can certainly change during the course of a criminal case, so sometimes they can take several months, and someone might find a job in that time, or they might actually not be able to, well, I'm sorry, they might not have been able to afford one in the beginning, but maybe in a few months could have, you know, provided some kind of recruitment for the city. So it's, it really is a case-by-case basis in which the judge would have discretion.
So Maria, if, if somebody's arrested, and I, I guess I don't understand the procedure here, if you're asked a question on whether or not you, you have counsel or you can afford counsel, if not, somebody's going to be appointed, right?
No, how much you can pay.
It's a questionnaire that helps the judge determine indigency on whether to appoint counsel initially. But the judge will usually go through it with them and then appoint counsel if the judge determines, but that is at the outset.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah. They're going to be giving counsel one way or another.
If, if there, if there is a chance that the defendant might be incarcerated if convicted, then there is an obligation to appoint counsel if it cannot be afforded.
This is all about whether or not we can collect a fee if somebody can afford to pay, and if they can't, then the judge has the latitude to waive that fee.
Exactly.
In the end, that's all this is. Okay, got it.
Do you, you cited several other cities in the report here. Do we have any information as to what they collect, what kind of percent or...
There was one in Olathe, they have a flat fee, and it's a hundred dollars set by a resolution, and they reported that they collected twenty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-eight in two thousand and twelve, and about twenty-seven thousand in two thousand and eleven. So it's certainly not one hundred percent of the cost, but it is a certain percentage.
And, and these will only be charged for people that are convicted?
And also upon if they enter a diversionary agreement.
Oh, okay.
Because very frequently, people who have attorneys have them help, help them obtain diversion. And in cases like DUI, for example, a diversion for DUI is considered a conviction as far as sentencing is concerned, and so we would ask that it apply to both.
Okay. Any other questions for Maria? Okay. Thank you. So, do we, these, yeah, they're all in one ordinance, both of them, okay. So the question is whether or not we're going to try to recoup fees for appointed counsel and served jail time. Is there any public comment on this item?
Here anyway. I'd like to make it clear about several things about this, how this works. A lot of people have said and written in this city that a conviction in municipal court is a conviction. If it is appealed, once it is appealed to district court, which is no easy process, it is then not considered a conviction anymore, and you have a trial de novo, which is like from the start. So we really need to be very careful when we talk about convictions and people who have convictions, because if they win on appeal or the city at any point decides to dismiss the case, there is no conviction. As far as, it's something very strange at municipal court, they're down to one, they say one law firm, but it's really one lawyer, I think, that's here, and I think he spends part of his time in another city. And they used to give you Douglas County Legal Aid, you had to do that or have a valid reason and written, you know, if you didn't. Now Chuck Briscoe retired, and they don't have that anymore. So it's actually one lawyer doing all the, strikes me as odd. Also, as far as the cost, I was once told they were paid by the hour, and then I was told they were paid flat rate, which is a disincentive to have a trial, and therefore, I mean, if you ever sat there and watched how many minors in possession in DUIs and that kind of thing, you know, bargained out and so forth and so on. The form the judge has, they, they tell you it's completely up to the judge, the form is like completely out of date, it's got like a poverty level that's like years and years and years old, there's no guidelines as to whether they will give that or not. I'd say that somebody's in jail isn't necessarily guilty, and if they could get out of jail, they probably would. And leaving them in jail is certainly not going to bring in the bucks, you know, to help them pay, I guess, a minimum wage job, probably, that'd be seventy-two forty-one. You know, I have some real issues with even the appeal, was that you, Commissioner Amick, who was asking about the appeal? That in itself is a difficult process to get the right forms and the right information, the right number of days, how to do it, how to file it, and so forth and so on, and it's certainly nothing that happens when you first go to jail. So, I know that because I got sent to jail. Even though I have like no criminal history, apparently I decided to take it up in my old age, and I don't even have a, I'm not perfect, but I don't even have a moving violation. I'm a retired social worker. Had a problem with a neighbor who cat kept coming in my yard and killing birds, and spoke to animal control, they, you know, it was one of those things where we did everything possible to avoid trapping, humanely trapping the cat. And I can only surmise that's the reason that he falsely accused me of a felony. And you don't want to pay anything to be in jail, you just want to kill yourself. And I was there, no Miranda, three AM was the first time I was allowed to use a phone, there's no lawyer waiting for you, nobody telling you anything, it's, it's a nightmare. And if I hadn't owned a home, I wouldn't have been able to get out on bond. Nine and a half months later, when the tape that I had recording was played for, after the preliminary hearing, was played for the, for the, the ADA.
Okay. Wrap it up, please.
Well, I'll just wrap up, you know, I am saying some very revealing things about myself, but I'd just like to say that if I had, I, I would be, I would have had to spend nine and a half months in jail. Losing everything. Nobody even cared if my cat was dead or alive, or if I was picking up grandchildren, you know, and it was all false. And I didn't get that four hundred dollars back, or the money for when the city illegally towed my car. So I just want you to have a little sympathy for people who are in jail, and realize that they are in jail, but they're not necessarily guilty. And
Understood.
It's difficult for them to get out, and if they have additional cost of paying for their, I think I had a untoasted English muffin.
Okay.
So, I mean, I mean, forgive me for loving Cardinals, but when I was in my own yard
Okay. In the daytime. You're way past your time limit, so let's end it.
Well, I'm sorry for bringing it up, but I mean, I don't know anybody else here who's going to speak up and say that they were, you know, not convicted at all, but that was your city's tax dollars at work.
Okay.
You paid for that one.
Any other public comment? Okay. So, two fees? Yes.
I think, I guess my, my question, Maria, would be, has, has a sliding scale been looked at? Because in most, in the nonprofit field, if you go to get healthcare, if you go, I mean, obviously not at just food, but if you ask somebody how much they can pay, they may answer that accurately at zero, or they may say a hundred bucks if they really can't. That's a lot of money for somebody in poverty, and so has that been looked at to where it's less up to the judge and more, because, because my sense is that I don't want somebody to be, everybody has bad days, I don't want somebody to be, you know, for, for having a bad day, you know, because nobody likes being sent to jail. Is there, has a fee been looked at?
You mean a flat fee?
Uh, sliding scale, so based upon the amount of money that you make. Seems to be more consistent than just discretion, because I can, I can only imagine if, you know, two people making the same amount of money, one gets stuck with paying a hundred dollars and one gets stuck with paying five hundred for whatever reason, I think it would be more feasible for us to, to look at a sliding scale where everybody pays the same based upon the amount of money that they make.
That could be possible. Right now, we're just basing this language off of the state statute, which says that the municipal court can assess these things and not anybody else or, you know, reviewing the municipal court judge's decision. But it is discretionary, but there currently are and will continue to be monthly check-ins as they're called in municipal court, so if someone is ordered to pay these kinds of recoupment fees, the judge will have them back on a monthly basis to determine whether they've made any payments. the judge will have them back on a monthly basis to determine whether they've made any payments. Or, and if they can't, you know, why, tell the judge what the reason is for that and how much progress they've made, if any. And if there is any reason that the defendant is not able to pay this, then it could be waived at that time. But there, it's not just you owe one hundred dollars and that's it. They do check in with the judge. And there can also be a payment plan set up for someone who can't pay one hundred outright. It's certainly not required upfront.
Okay, seems reasonable. Any questions for Maria whilst she's up there?
So Maria, are all of those payments, is that, is that all established by the judge? Or is there, that's the only person that does it, right?
Right, it would be just reasonable, via reasonable amount of attorney fees. And the municipal court cases aren't very, very complicated. I'm sure some of them will be different. It ranges from how far a case goes, if someone can just come to court, perhaps with their attorney and plead guilty, for example. Or it can go beyond that and they might ask for a bench trial, for example, or even appeal. So it really varies, but we don't have a schedule of how much it would cost in each case.
And then, section twelve dash one oh five point one, that is the state law as it's currently written, right?
The, yes, the discretion for the municipal court judge. We, our language is the recruitment fees and we've made it twofold. But all of this about court discretion, reasonable amount of attorney fees is all from state statute.
I, I have one concern, and, and that is, you know, you have the municipal court, you can ask, you can ask to go ahead and plead guilty, non-guilty, have services. I guess I would have some worry that if someone didn't have money, that it might influence them on what their choices would be, on what they would either plead or not plead. And I'd hate for that to happen to somebody who didn't have money, to have a situation where they didn't ask for a court trial because they didn't think they could afford it. Is that, is that a worry, is that a reasonable worry?
I don't, I don't think so in these cases where the whole amount could be waived or not ordered at the very end. So the defendant would ask for an attorney, or maybe if, even if the court finds that the defendant is indigent, the court will appoint one. Unless the defendant outright waives and a council will say, I don't want an attorney, then they wouldn't have one. But it's the court's obligation, the defendant doesn't necessarily ask for an attorney. And this discretion that's provided at the end saves any type of repayment if it's really not feasible.
When, when is this decided, at the beginning, middle, or end?
The repayment of attorney fees would be only upon conviction. So that's at sentencing at the conclusion of the case.
Okay, so it'd be at the end, just at the end. So there probably wouldn't be that worry then.
Maria, do we have a set fee per client? Or is it a sliding scale? Or do they pay hourly to the appointed attorneys, city-appointed attorney?
I, I believe it's a sliding scale. I might have Vicki Stanwicks from municipal court answer if that's okay. She might have more information, thanks.
Good evening. You're asking for, are, are hired attorneys, do they get paid by case or by the hour?
One of the speakers suggested that the, the attorneys are paid a flat fee, so they would be less likely to help their clients, you know, take care of a case. Whether it's, they get paid by the hour, they get paid by the case, by the person, how do we, how do we repay the outside counsel?
They're paid, their contract is payment on an annual basis of, well, we pay them on a monthly basis, but it is a set fee per month. But that is for the average number of cases historically that we have had. And that is what they agreed upon. If, if the caseload gets extremely higher than that, then they will be compensated for the additional caseload that they will incur.
So it's based on how much work they do?
Correct.
Okay, good, thanks.
I'd really like to see us do a sliding scale. I think that makes more sense. And I don't think asking somebody how much money can you pay is a good, is a good question. I mean, I think any nonprofit in town that, that charges a fee for service does a sliding scale. And if at that point the judge wants to have discretion to waive the fee or, you know, institute a payment plan, I mean, I think that makes the most prudent sense to do. You ask for somebody's, you know, how much money a month do you make? And, and then from there, you've just got a chart so that everything's the same. I'm just concerned about, you know, if there's a difference and, and, you know, somebody who makes twenty-four thousand dollars a year is, is, they pay a hundred bucks and somebody that makes twenty-four thousand dollars a year pays two-hundred and fifty, I can see that being an issue. So, so rather than risk that liability, I think a sliding scale that's just kind of the same across the board would be, would make the most sense to me.
So that would be for the attorney or counsel provided. What about sliding scale for served jail time?
I mean, I think the same thing. I mean, obviously it wouldn't be the same amount, because it's, you know, obviously attorney's costs are higher than jail fees. But I think that would be smart.
The only concern I have there is if you have two people, two parties each baking the same, say, what'd you say, twenty-four thousand?
Sure.
One may be single and not have a lot of obligations and could very easily afford that. The other one might have three or four children or have an elderly mother that lives with them that they're providing for, have some other bad debt kinds of problems that would keep them from being the equal of the, the first example. So I think that's what this ordinance is trying to do, is to allow the judge ultimate freedom in deciding how much someone should pay or if they can pay anything at all. So that's, that's the other side of the issue. I see where you're going with it. I mean, it's, it's, it's an equity issue in terms of how, how the applicant or the person convicted of offense would look at it. On the other hand, I don't think you're gonna get two equals out of the same, out of the same group. You know, you're just gonna have a lot of different variances that are gonna...
And I think if you went by household size and amount of money, I mean, that's kind of the sliding scale. Obviously, a single mom with three kids is different than a single person. If I understand it right, under the current, Maria, I want to make sure I understand it, under the current, uh, uh, right now, the judge can basically say, no, you don't have to pay, or yes, you do pay. Is that, is that right? The judge has that discretion to waive that fee completely?
Actually, the current ordinance as it's written does not order any type of attorney fees.
Okay, okay.
If I could just add one thing, I'm Tony Wheeler, the city attorney. And on the sliding scale question, I'd just ask you to keep in mind that our municipal court does have a high volume of cases. I checked with court manager and in two thousand twelve, we had between three and four thousand cases last year in which appointed counsel, counsel were appointed. And we have just seven clerks. If we had to do an individual analysis, that could be time-consuming and could be, you know, could increase our, our workload quite a bit. When we proposed this ordinance, we did look at what the statute allows and we did look at what other communities are doing. We selected the across-the-board flat fee because we thought it was a reasonable fee for the amount of services that they are getting. And the discretion that the judge has at the end does provide some protection for the person who really does not have the means to pay. So that is why we proposed the flat fee as opposed to a sliding scale fee.
Jeremy, I, I think the term judge is, is fairly clear as to what his role is in assessing this. And I think other entities don't have that entity to make those determinations. Somebody who is held accountable by the city and by us to fairly assess fees. And I'm afraid that we're gonna start creating additional burden where these fees are, we're trying to recoup, recoup some of the costs of operating these court activities. And we don't really want to add to the cost, that's for sure. But, you know, I understand what you're saying and I, I would hope that the judge would be fair and unbiased about how he, he assessed fees. That would ultimately be his job every day. And if he's not doing it, then, then we need a different judge, clearly. But, you know, ultimately, that's our, that's his job, is to be fair and unbiased and to take into consideration all facts in a case. So I, I would hope that we could trust him with that, with that job. But I understand what you're saying about having a bad day or just not.
I necessarily mean the judge.
Oh.
I'm just talking about maybe the, the client.
Oh, okay.
You know? Somebody that, somebody that's mean may have a, well...
I understand.
Dave, if someone needs to appeal the ability to pay, do they appeal it to the municipal judge?
If someone had, if a defendant, a convicted defendant is appealing the decision about the amount of recruitment fees that are being assessed to them, the judge has already made his decision. And I think the appeal would probably then go to the district court that those fees were unreasonable. Got a lot of confidence in our municipal judge and his ability to, to make these discernments. The other item that we probably have not emphasized enough is, is that these are, we, we believe these are important fees. You're gonna hear a discussion about traffic fines here in, in a few minutes. This is an important revenue source for the city. And we need to look at what other communities are doing and see if we can learn from them as far as their ability to do that. And most communities have these types of, of recruitment fees. We have costs associated with appointed counsel. We have costs associated with jail. Taxpayers are paying those costs. Question is, do we want to try in a reasonable fashion to try and recoup some of those fees?
And when you say revenue, you mean the means to pay for what we're already spending and not being reimbursed for?
And Dave, where would this revenue go? Twenty-seven thousand dollars, would it go into general operating?
Goes into the general fund, the revenue source. And if you've looked at our municipal court fine revenue, you see that it has declined over recent years. It's primarily a factor of the first number in the equation, the number of citations issued. Have not, have not kept pace.
Any other questions or comments regarding item two? So do we want to have a motion? Is anybody just didn't putting up a motion for ordinance number eighty-eight ninety-eight?
I move that we approve ordinance number eighty-eight ninety-eight.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve ordinance eighty-eight ninety-eight by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Next item on the agenda is to consider adopting on first reading, ordinance number eighty-eight ninety-seven, establishing a traffic infraction fines and fees increase for speeding and defective equipment.
Maria will walk us through this ordinance as well.
Good evening again. The city attorney's office is proposing the language in eighty-eight... I'm sorry, eighty-eight ninety-seven, which proposes increasing fines for speeding and equipment violations. The city does a periodic review of our current fine schedule every couple of years. And it was last substantively changed in two thousand nine when the city passed the current ordinance, which raised the speeding fines. And before that, the previous time was two thousand one. So this is just part of a periodic review that we have. And the goal is to keep Lawrence in line with surrounding communities to make sure that we have fines that are not, not aligned, to make sure that we're aligned with the surrounding cities. During this year's review, the city attorney's office determined that as far as speeding is concerned, speeding itself, Lawrence is towards the bottom of the list of surrounding cities, as far as what they charge for speeding and equipment as well. And so to stay aligned with those individual fines, we would recommend increasing each of those. Available for any questions if needed.
Any questions for Maria? That was fast.
There's not much to it.
More money.
Well, it's also, it has a deterrent effect for speeders as well. And the reason we do periodic reviews is so that we don't just have them every ten or even more years. And so the increase is gradual this way and not shockingly high as opposed, you know, if we did it every ten years, for example.
Yes, sir.
So Maria, if the number of citations are going down, as mentioned by the city manager a little bit ago, was the deterrent we placed in two thousand nine, is, is that what did it?
I, I'm not sure that there's a direct correlation. I would like to think that, you know, drivers are being more safe out there. But I, I don't have a direct correlation for that. It's very possible, I'm not sure.
A hundred and forty-nine dollar fine would be a deterrent.
Maria, did, did I miss the total cost relative to other cities for the ticket? For the fine plus court costs? Is that, are those in there?
No, I only listed two to show a perspective of the two cities that had low fines. I do have that information. Vicki Stanwicks did some research earlier this year.
Because she said Manhattan and Hutch are twenty-five and eighteen.
Yes, and then their court...
And they have a high court cost fee.
Exactly. So the, the amount that Hutchinson keeps is fifty-five. By, the state mandates that twenty-five dollars and, or twenty dollars and fifty cents of court costs go to the state. And so the city only keeps part of the court costs, not all of them, not one hundred percent. So that would just represent the amount that the city keeps. But it is higher.
Their share, that which they keep is higher than what we keep in Lawrence?
Yes, Lawrence keeps thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And Hutch, for example, keeps fifty-five, fifty.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions for Maria? Thank you.
Thanks.
Public comment on this item?
I'll just say that I, I could be wrong, but I think we had a grant or grants for speeding. There used to be like a speed trap on Michigan between, I know, going to the vets between like Ninth and Sixth, like that little round, rounded traffic circle thing. And I think there were perhaps some other ones. You know, somebody other than me might know, but that might have influenced the number going down if those grants dedicated to, you know, putting specific officers on, on that assignment. Because I think we just had a one for, was that for? We just had, I don't know if it's a grant, but we just had a dedicated thing to seatbelt in, I think DUI thing over a weekend. That may contribute to the numbers changing.
Okay, thanks, Patricia. Any other public comment on this? I, I do think we talked a little bit about in the past as to why, why we may have seen a decrease in the number of tickets. Some of it's related to the fact we weren't sitting in the car waiting and, you know, with radar gun, doing saturation on, on speeders. I know that. In fact, we, you know, the number of officers that we had were down and they were busy doing other things. So I think, I don't know if it's gonna have a direct correlation or not, Mike, but I think, you know, we, we have definitely changed that and we've, you know, asked our officers to do a little bit more saturation on the, on the speeding and enforcement of the rules we have. But I don't know if they'll see a drop or not.
Question, Dave. Dave, the two thousand and nine increase, do you remember what it was?
I don't, I don't recall. As Maria indicated, we try and periodically look at the fines and fees, see where the rest of peer communities are and make appropriate adjustments. We don't want to be too high, we don't want to be too low because if we, if we don't tend to it over time, the, the trend has been that we have to have a major jump in fees and fines to be close to where other communities are. I think the clear reason why we're not issuing as many citations, it's not anything to do with the productivity of our officers. It's the fact that they've got other demands and they've got higher demands in many cases as far as where they need to be. They don't have the discretion to run a patrol. Chief Kative has had to disband the formality of our, of our traffic unit, which concentrated on that, also did accident work as well and fold those staff members into patrol units in order to have adequate coverage for the community. This, this ordinance, though, I think reflects the fact that we want to periodically look at these and see if we want to update them to be similar to what other communities are.
Maria, you have that number?
Yes, Commissioner Amick. In two thousand nine, it was changed to fifty dollars as the base. It was previously thirty dollars, so it was a twenty dollar increase. And I'm not sure what it was before that, but this is in line with the previous increase.
Okay. Okay. No other public comment? Commissioners, what would you like to do with ordinance eighty-eight ninety-seven? No comments?
Well, I'm trying to, you know, you get a fine because you obviously have, you know, broken the posted speed limit here. What is the fair amount to pay? And I don't think that we've ever really, you know, discussed that on a regular basis, but, you know, I'm sure that I voted for the last raise that we had. Thing that I'm wondering is, is that, you know, and Jeremy brought up a little bit ago about a sliding scale kind of thing, is it reasonable to go, rather than going at thirty dollars all at one time, you go at, you know, maybe half that over a two or three-year period or, you know, something that way? Is that reasonable to consider?
I can't say that it is unreasonable. I think that what we are proposing is appropriate, given the fact we don't, we're off to other things to look at these on an annual basis, so we're looking at that on a two or three-year basis. I also point to the fact that we want to be similar to where other communities are. This puts us probably towards the top, but with other communities, we'll probably adjust theirs in the meantime. So I think it's reasonable what we have proposed. Also note, again, I just point out the importance of the revenue source in our general fund. Can you do Vice Mayor what you're proposing? Yes, you can. And I won't say that we can rewrite it that way and it would be just as reasonable, but I think that what we've proposed is appropriate.
The, I had somebody call me and say, why are you doing this? And kind of was irritated. Actually, it was an email, it wasn't a phone call. But, you know, there's, like, you don't have to pay this tax. It's not a tax, it's a fine. You don't have, you don't have to go there. You just don't speed and you don't run red lights and you don't do that kind of behavior and you'd never have to worry about the issue. And that's, that's the bottom line for me, is that if you obey the law, you're not gonna have the fine. So for people who want to get there faster, want to push the red lights, want to be a safety risk, then they're gonna have to pay a fine. And that's how it is.
When you, when you look at this, below, it's a sixty percent increase, on the high, it's an increase of twenty-two and a half percent or something like that. When you average those, come up to about thirty percent or about, you know, five percent a year for the past five years, that's not an exorbitant amount. So in some ways, I look at it as we have graduated this in over five years by not increasing on a yearly basis. We've decided to do that. And that seems a reasonable way because it's easier, everybody knows what it is. On the other hand, you look at this and there aren't any increases in below ten, because I don't think anybody gets a ticket below ten, whereas very seldom would be given below ten. So really, you're talking about people who are going ten miles an hour above, which is a safety issue. And one of the reasons we do this is to make it uncomfortable not to speed. I think Bob's right. People can choose to obey the law. I don't think it's an excessive amount when you're talking about five percent a year for five to six percent a year. So I guess I would be in favor of just doing it all at one time, since we've kind of done it over a period of five years, since we haven't done it since two thousand nine or four.
Okay. I was just gonna point out too, I'm glad you did, that this is just for ten and over. I mean, it's, which, you know, definitely is a safety, safety issue. So I'm not sure that folks that were following it maybe dug into the ordinance to actually found that out, but if you're, you know, if you get stopped for eight over, it's still fifty dollars, it's just ten and over is.
You have the discount rate.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
The blue light special. I'd move we approve ordinance number eighty-eight ninety-seven.
I'd do twenty.
You're second.
Should I make a further amendment?
No, no, we're not.
Okay.
Ordinance number eighty, there's a motion by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Reardon, to approve on first reading ordinance number eighty-eight ninety-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
I think my nightmare tonight will be somebody will come up on my porch and run me over with her car while I'm sitting on my couch.
If we had drones, we'd be able to protect you in advance with that.
With surveillance out there.
So the next item is item four, considering text, initiating a text amendment to the city Lawrence Land Development Code, chapter twenty, to include bar or lounge as permitted use in the CN two district.
Deputy Mayor Scott McCullough with the planning office. This item responds to a request we received to place the bar or lounge use in the CN two district. Have just a little bit of background for you on this matter. Here we have our table in our development code for the bar or lounge use, which is essentially an establishment that may or may not serve food, but derives more than forty-five percent of its income off the sale of alcohol. We also show you here the different categories of non-residential zoning districts, the CN one and CN two districts being commercial neighborhood districts, which right now do not permit this use. It is allowed via special use in MU, not allowed in our office, primarily office district, but is allowed in our downtown district, community commercial and regional, and our CS district. Our CS district is primarily that strip development along Twenty-third Street, South Iowa, Sixth Street, and beyond. What's an important point of this, and what may be perceived as an unintended consequence of the two thousand six development code, is that the use was allowed in what was the former C two district. So CN two is the new C two district. And that is why, I will show you in a minute, when you look at where the C and two nodes of development are, we actually have a few non-conforming uses that were the, were a consequence of the two thousand six code. So for example, we have, we have a few bars here in Hillcrest Shopping Center. We have in Nineteenth and Haskell, a bar use. We have a bar use here at Bob Billings and Wacarosa Drive. Those are all conforming uses. The unintended consequence may be that the two thousand six code doesn't allow a neighborhood type bar. So to establish a new bar in the community, you have to go to that CS district, which still touches a number of neighborhoods if it's, if they're adjacent to our strip areas, but doesn't allow for the neighborhood bar use in some of the newer nodes in the city. And so what this request would do is allow, it just initiates it tonight, they're not deciding any issues tonight. It allows us to have the discussion with the planning commission and ultimately you about whether the use is appropriate in CN two zoned areas, and then whether or not there should be use standards associated with them to keep them neighborhood in scope and not, not larger scale and more impact in neighborhoods. So that's the request tonight. We believe and ask that you initiate this amendment so we can go do that work with the planning commission.
So some of the things we could, if this moves along, we could consider the size of an establishment, so many square feet?
Yes, sir.
Or the number of tables that are available, some, some kind of limitation that would protect the neighborhood from, say, a two thousand capacity blowout crowd on Friday and Saturday night?
Yes, sir. Parameters like outdoor seating or size of the bar. Our code has these use standards established in a different chapter that help limit that. In fact, there are, there are use standards already established for, not obviously the straight bar in the, in the commercial districts, but for their use as accessory to hotels, for their use in, in the CD district, especially is what you're most familiar with seeing that an outright bar is not allowed without the food sales standard, for example. And so we do this already, and so that, we think that would be a tool that we would need to explore.
I see that Bullwinkle's is being refurbished. Would that be an example of covered by this, or is, I know that's grandfathered in, but...
No, sir, that, that's actually an example of a bar in the MU district. They received a rezoning. It was a non-conforming bar, as I recall, but today it's currently conforming with a special use permit.
The applicant is at twenty seventeen East Seventeenth Street. This is probably a stupid question, but is that their place of residence or is that where they're proposing the establishment goes?
No, that, that's, that must be their place of, I don't have the application funding. They don't have a distinct place right now. They are looking at several different areas and several of them are in CN two district. And so they're pursuing this because they have, have a couple of them that would really make sense for them and need the use to accommodate their proposal.
So it wouldn't be at twenty seventeen East Seventeenth Street?
No.
Okay, all right.
It would be at one of these, they're not looking at a new place to zone to CN two, it would be in one of these existing.
Sure.
Places they're looking at are existing CN two.
Okay, thanks.
So, so.
Scott at the, oh, go ahead. Scott, at the corner of Fourteenth and Massachusetts, we have CN two there.
Yes.
With the, with the school right across the street, there are additional things that somebody would have to go through to be located at that place.
Yes, sir, to get the liquor license, there are other criteria involved as well.
Those would remain in place, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm just, have the little concerns in the fact that I, when I think of neighborhood bars, I think of situations that could be difficult for, for neighborhoods. It doesn't look like to me that there's any place in here that you would have a situation like what happens with Bullwinkle's, which is really surrounded a hundred percent by houses and residential. That, that would not occur, that I see anywhere in here. That was my concern. Is that correct?
It could potentially, well, a couple of things, yes. These are all identified nodes in our comprehensive plan for neighborhood commercial uses. They exist primarily at intersections of arterial streets. It's not that you couldn't get CN two rezoned somewhere else, more interior to a neighborhood, but under today's parameters and framework of how we look at commercial nodes, they're primarily at these major intersections.
So somebody could create a situation similar to Bullwinkle's and put it right next to somebody's house if they got the CN two designation.
With adoption of a rezoning or an.
Regardless of what the, what the designation is around it.
Yes, in a, in a situation like that, we often look at, one of our tools is to employ conditional zoning. Usually, when that happens, we look at the list in our table and say, is every use in that zoning district compatible with its surrounding context? And if it's not, we typically will, will work to strike those uses. So while it will be there available for use, there's no guarantee that they get that use in the future through the rezoning effort.
Any other questions, Scott?
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? So we have a use that was stricken and now being asked to re-apply. Any comments or questions about this?
You're, you're talking about the commission now?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I have concerns about this. I don't see any reason this needs to be done. We don't have a dearth of drinking establishments. It worries me that we can create a situation where you can get a drinking establishment in a neighborhood. I don't know, I don't understand, maybe I just don't understand, but I don't know why we need to do that. I don't know what's wrong with the situation. Somebody wants to build something.
It was a use that was previously allowed when the zoning designations were changed in these exact same locations that we're speaking of. So by code, we removed a permitted use, not on purpose? Is that, is that a fair statement or?
I think it was, I think it was done purposely based on the diagnostic we had, but I also don't know that we had detailed discussions about every use when this, when the two thousand six code was employed. We've done many, many text amendments, once we've identified that there may be an issue involved, or at least, you know, a different perspective, and have typically gone through that process of text amendment to understand where we want to be at.
As things come up and we identify uses that were once allowed and now are no longer, we typically go through this process and try to reorder things.
We do, and I think, you know, zoning districts separate uses and we don't, the two thousand six code worked to make clear distinctions in the zoning districts. The other way we make clear distinctions is through our use standards that I displayed, where the use may be allowed across the board, but limited in different ways in different districts where it's necessary.
Okay, so anyway, that's what I was thinking, the reason why is because people own this property, it used to be an acceptable use, we changed the code and now it was no longer, that's my understanding of reading of this.
If I may.
Yes, please.
Just showing you one more thing on the tab, that, that may, may impact your decision. The other component of this is that the CS district, which there's ample CS zoning, again, on our strip development, our code prohibits its use for new developments. So where we have our nodes at the major arterials are more likely going to be at its highest use, CN two, unless it's a regional community commercial, like it's Sixth and K-ten, for example, where it's a much more intense use. So while we can't employ, you know, MU is not likely going to be employed very much in the west part of Lawrence. CD is downtown. The CCCR is more regional in scope and the CS is not used anymore as strip development. CN one and CN two were really intended to try to replace the CS, but, but without all of the uses. And so I think that's an important component as well, because without the use, you're not likely going to see very much, except at the very auto-centric, commercial sites, which are more, much more intense, you'd see the bar uses. You're not likely going to see them anywhere close to the neighborhoods, which, which is part of the city.
Scott, if, with a bar in a neighborhood setting like this, like we're considering, under the restrictiveness, can you restrict hours of operation as well? The thing I forget to is noise. Okay, so in Kansas, you can sell liquor up till two AM in the morning and if it's a popular bar with an outdoor component, et cetera, you're gonna have noise, you're gonna have music, you're gonna have people.
Right.
How does that, how does that, how can we protect ourselves and our neighbors and yet go ahead and accomplish what the applicant's asking?
I think we will explore all of those situations. Most of our use standards relate to the physical development of a use, but I think that's a fair question and a fair thing to direct us to look at, is all of the operational characteristics as well and see if, see if there's some standards there. We also may look at just the special use permit vehicle versus allowing it outright. If you really want to judge the use by its context and how it operates, then it may be that a special use is the most appropriate vehicle, like it is in the MU district, so that you get to understand and ask the questions about the operation. What kind of bar is this? Is this, you know, sports in nature? Do you want outdoor, outdoor areas for dining? How late do you open? Stay open, all those issues. So the special use permit may be a vehicle as well. We're likely going to present a couple of options to the planning commission, city commission, about what you think makes this a compatible use.
Okay, so right now, we can't use the special use permit in this, in the CN, is it CN two zone?
Yes. No, it's, it's prohibited use altogether.
So if, if we decided that was the way we wanted to go, we need to move this forward? And then when we approve it, approve it for special use benefit only?
Right, there are two ways that we allow uses. One is by the P, which stands for permitted use outright, and sometimes that has use standards associated with it and sometimes it doesn't, it's just a permitted use and you can do your site plan and, and you do your building plans and then you move in and start the operation. Other, the other way to get a use established is via the special use permit, and that's the process that goes to the planning commission, city commission, and it's to the discretion of the city commission whether or not that is granted at that location, at a specific location.
Okay, so, so to help clarify this, there's a CN two district at the southeast corner of Bob Billings Parkway and Wacarosa.
Yes.
And there's currently two, what I would deem bars at that location. How'd they get there? To make everyone understand.
Right, we believe, our research shows that they were established when it was zone C two.
Okay, so those. So, those two existed before. If one closed down, if we wanted to open another one under a separate period of time, it would not be allowed at this current...
They could lose their grandfather, their grandfather right to that use.
Right. So, there's two locations there right now, and in this exact type land use, and that would decrease the number if somebody shut down and somebody else wanted to open up, say, a year or two later in the space. Okay. So, that, that's what I thought. I wanted to make, make sure I understood that these are, they're already in place in many of these locations, and they're just grandfathered in.
Yes. And that, that, that also is a, is a type of unintended consequence that we just are realizing with this request.
Okay.
It has not been presented to us by any of the other owners that that situation exists.
Okay. Yes.
Scott, under the action that's on this item tonight is to initiate the text amendment that would allow as a permitted use in the CN2, does there need to be any change in that language or, or the initiation that would, would direct staff to take the Planning Commission, the special use permit, you know, all of those kind of things, or is that just considered?
No, that's a general, a general way to say, explore all of the possible methods, and we will do that.
Scott, could you explain to me again what, what happens after tonight if this is passed?
Sure, Commissioner Reardon. We will, we will set this for a Planning Commission hearing date. It is a hearing item, so any member of the public can come and testify and present information to the Planning Commission. We will write, draft a report with probably one to three options for the Planning Commission to discuss, and then they will make a recommendation to the City Commission. It is ultimately the City Commission's decision about whether to adopt the language that would become code, that if adopted and supported, would allow an establishment to open a bar or lounge use in our CN2 district with the appropriate process to, to establish it after that. And that'll either occur with a permit, as a permitted use, either with or without use standards, so we can look at size and outdoor dining and noise and those kind of things, or establish a special use permit vehicle where they would actually have to, once adopted, apply for a special use permit, and that would be processed through the Planning Commission and City Commission as a special use permit application.
I, I, it seems like there's some inequities based on the going from the CN to the, or the CC to the CN2. So, since there are time and realizing that, that those type of things that Bob has mentioned, which is, which is noise and all the things around bars, and if you, you probably know all these, but I live near several, and one is Cig Eps next to us at times. So, as long as we mitigate those...
That's right.
As long as we mitigate those, if we can right some wrongs that we've done by previous changes, especially those two bars that are there now, I would be amenable to that, but I do have some significant concerns about safety and, and the difficulties about being bars in a neighborhood situation. So, maybe that word neighborhood is a little misleading.
And I appreciate that, and, and you will get a lot more information on this as it goes through our process.
There'll be plenty of time for you to mitigate my worries, probably.
Try.
Scott, timeframe, will this be on the September Planning Commission agenda?
No, sir.
And so, it'll be October, it'll be back to us about November, December?
See you in time for Christmas.
There you go.
You better do it before Christmas, because Christmas, that's not gonna happen.
Motion? Uh, yes, please.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to initiate a text amendment to the City of Lawrence Land Development Code, Chapter 20, to include bar or lounge as a permitted use in the CN2 district.
Just second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Amix, seconded by Commissioner Shum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Is there a public comment of a general nature this evening?
Mr. Mayor, this is not a general nature, and the cameras have left, but I shared with you something that's deeply personal, hurtful to me today, and I didn't, I misread the clock, and I get addled by that, and I wanted to say that without doubt, when the ADA got a copy of the tape that was made by me at that time, and had the, my accuser come in and hear it, we had a hearing very shortly afterwards in which the ADA asked the judge to dismiss the case because he did not feel guilty verdict. And the witnesses in this case were a person across the street against whom I had, do not currently have, a protection from stalking order, and his girlfriend he lived with. So, I just want to tell you, that ending, it's a terrible thing. Ruined my life. And then I think I, when I came back home, I got a notice from the, you guys, to come to court for housing violation. So, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that, that I called the, the chief's office last year and asked to make a complaint against the officer because he had, had the same tape to listen to and so forth, and there were various other odd, oddities about the whole situation. And the chief, I never got a response from him, but a higher power prevailed, and that officer drank himself three times the legal limit of alcohol, and on January 2nd crashed into the pole at 6th and Wacarosa. And so, my complaint was satisfied, because he was out to kill somebody that night, and I'm glad he killed himself instead of someone innocent.
Okay, that's, that's inappropriate. I don't want to hear any more. No, I, just don't say another word regarding any of those issues whatsoever. If you have nothing else to say, please sit down, but do not disparage one of our officers.
I, I did say that I tried to go through channels, and the police department was not interested.
Please don't talk about that anymore. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, what can I say?
Talk about anything else you want, but not that, okay? Any other public comment?
Hi, gentlemen. My name is Joseph Hardy, and I'm the dogs in the cemetery guy. And I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to read the letter that I sent to the commission on the 21st of June, but to introduce myself, I'd just like to reread the letter to you, just a couple paragraphs.
Okay.
Your commissioners, my family and I have lived, gone to school, and worked in Lawrence for nearly 25 years. We have a great city. Since last year, we also have family buried here. Several times in the last few months, I personally have encountered dogs in the cemetery. Some have been on leashes, some have not, and some have had electronic collars. To have dogs walk across graves and to both defecate and urinate on graves is, to my understanding, legal, as long as the dog owner picks up the feces, since the cemeteries are part of the parks system. We can all agree that the parks of Lawrence are beautiful, and dog owners should be able to enjoy them with their beloved pets. I'm also sure that we all readily agree that to walk dogs in the cemetery with all that it means to walk a dog is wrong. It's not a matter of morality, it's a matter of human respect and ethics. It's what ought to be done, not what is done, but what ought to be done. That's what ethics is all about. It's filthy, contemptible, and disrespectful with regards to honoring and remembering those that have left this life. I'm not sure what sort of discussion or decision-making process went, was, was handled with you folks. Unfortunately, I was out of town in business until a few minutes ago. I meant to be here, but it's a difficult thing to consider that this would be an ordinance that wouldn't be widely acclaimed. Bob made a great comment earlier about speeding laws. You can't pass a law against speeding and expect people to not speed. But what you can do is tell people that if you do speed, you can speed all you want, but it's gonna cost you something. You can't legislate, like we all said in colleges, a child of the 60s, you can't legislate morality. But legislation is exactly that, an attempt to bring morality. But again, this is much higher than morality. Morality just describes how we are. Ethics is how we ought to be. And people you would expect would have the common decency to not allow their dogs to walk across. I wouldn't even walk across somebody else's grave myself. I'll walk on my own kid's grave if I want to, and no one else would do that to my kid's grave. It's just a common decency. Unfortunately, our culture does not have that common decency. So, even though we all know that we should drive to post a speed limit, or we should drive at a safe, you talked about safety earlier, over 10 miles an hour, that's, it's not safe anymore, so then you really gotta lay it to them. I agree with that, because we don't have common sense, and we aren't respectable people. So, I guess, you know, I don't, I'm not sure what your processes are, but I guess I would urge you to reconsider something that's very simple and completely, I think, by any human standard. So, with that, I mean, if I know what's supposed to happen here, you talk back at me or whatever. So, that's my comment right there.
Yeah, we don't normally dialogue, but I will tell you that we considered the ordinance and felt like there's multiple reasons why the addition of this ordinance might be, well, would not be approved by this commission, but I'd be happy to discuss it privately with, with you and have a discussion about what we decided or why we didn't feel like moving forward at this time was a...
So, is it, would it be appropriate for me to resubmit my request? Is that how it goes from here?
You could do that, yes. And I think, you know, we all believe that there needs to be more, we can do more to help protect and to preserve the, all of our, all of our public parks, but particular cemeteries where things that can desecrate the property and, and the grounds might cause people some anxiety and concern. We believe that, at the time, though, that it was not, we, we voted to deny it unanimously. So...
Everybody has a right to be wrong, don't they?
Yes, yes. So, anyway, that, that was what we did, but I'll be happy to discuss it after the meeting, which should, should end here shortly.
I will also.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment of a general nature? Future agenda items? Got 18 students next week?
Correct. And we also have our node and bond sale next week, and we'll be back at a number of items, probably talking with Mike about what, what makes sense here in the next few, few weeks.
Okay. And are there any commission items we need to discuss this evening?
Yes, sir.
And the calendar, there's a breakfast on Friday. I think the city bought a table that everyone get back to you.
I'll be in the morning. I talked to Bobby.
Bobby has left notes and messages with everybody to make sure that we accounted for that, and then also the Taste of Lawrence, the Fall Mixer, which is next week, if you want us to buy tickets for you or a guest.
Okay.
I just have to note that I'm on call that night and have to work till 6:00 or 7:00, so I would like to attend, but I cannot.
Understood, Doctor. Okay, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Room, second.
Motion to adjourn the meeting by Vice, or by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Vice Mayor Amix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Good night.
Bye.